Okay, everyone, it's two o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this workshop to order. And in attendance, we have Carol, Bob, Ed, and myself in the circle line. I need a motion to allow Doug to join the meeting remotely under.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second on my favor.
Aye.
Hey Doug, can you hear us?
Yep, thank you.
So what you have, before I turn it over to Laura, what you have is the first draft, rough draft of the budget for 2025.
We have that?
That's all for the budget. That's today's workshop.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
What you've sent me is not in front of us.
It will be. Laura's gonna pull it up. Keep in mind, this is the first rough draft. We have yet.
Things have changed actually since.
Yep, so internally, some things have changed. We've added one or two capital things. We haven't, we have not.
Has it changed since last night?
We haven't even incorporated the minor changes.
It has changes and it's not reflecting, okay.
Yes.
The changes that I made so far are small.
Yeah.
But they're not here. You'll get that next time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could you show us where the total, total, total is?
What do you mean total?
So I can compare what the total adopted budget was from last year, the total amount, and this time's total.
I don't, we don't have that.
We don't have that.
No.
Okay. No wonder I couldn't find it.
It's by section.
We, so we can have that for you at the next meeting. We were just trying to get all of the line items done.
Okay.
Yeah. So that way we could see where we fall. Now, I will, there's a caveat to this. Stony Brook has not provided us their numbers for 2025. They're not obligated to until May 15th, and that's per the R and M agreement. So all we did was plug in status quo or accounted for like we did with FPL increase for those utility line items. But what you have is.
So, so back up to Stony Brook. So where are we and they in the total things about them taking over all their own stuff? Remember, we, we deleted a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Not, not yet. So we're waiting. Tony, I guess, can give a recap out of the meeting. So regarding the roads, nothing yet. And we did have a conversation with HOA president and their board saying like, we're gonna go ahead and do the diligence, put their numbers there. And if, and when you come out with those numbers prior to the public hearing adopting the budget, then we'll bring it back to zero. So as of right now, the numbers are there. The only thing that we don't have is their numbers out of the O for what they're projecting. They have it to meet 15 to do it. I'm pretty sure it's probably done if I know them. But, but they have it into two weeks from now.
Can we go back to that admin issue I brought up earlier? Again, I go to that page that's back behind the 400 series, the two pages for the admin. And this points out the issue. If I take the general OO1 account on page 15, it's 781123. Is that correct? Admin, I believe it is. My 2024 budget was 505. I mean, we're not even, we're not even close.
Need to bear.
I, I think, and then the other one is, is it, well, if we take the general fund numbers that were in the approved version four and put those over on these, then I think we got a better start.
Yeah.
Because right now, I can't make any.
So to Ed's point, when we received this file from Infomark, we did not verify that they had the correct 2024 numbers. And after this was published, quickly realized that it didn't necessarily align. So we have to go back with Infomark and make sure that they have the appropriate numbers for the amended FY 2024 budget.
Why would that, why would that admin account and operation admin be on separate pages? Since it's the very first item, why would they have not had that at the beginning of what they sent you?
It's just the way that I put it. It's my last sheet because it's, we go by, we do each of the funds first, and then I go to do the shared costs. So it's the order that I put them in into the.
We'll correct it.
Is that she, she we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we want to start with page one, like line by line item and get your feedback? Because that's kind of how we did it previously. Yeah, because then it's, I think it's just a little bit faster, smoother, and yeah, okay. So let's go to the page one of the OO1 account.
Okay, but you're gonna start with page one as they've got it, which is not admin.
No, which is how.
The way it's in the.
Exactly.
So landscaping services.
Okay, so you're doing landscaping first. Okay.
So you want to just, the highlighted, if there were changes.
We put notes under the notes column. Some of the things we moved back, like the irrigation repairs for landscaping. We, they were under the 400 account. And it didn't make sense for them to be there. They're actually landscaping, so we moved them back under the one, under the OO1. So that's why they're there.
Right, so my only thing on the. Go ahead, Doug.
One, one quick, yeah, one quick question. So where it says contract services, where we go from 600 to 800. It just says mainscape contract. Does that mean there is an increase in the, in the contract? I like the notes, but sometimes the notes aren't quite thorough enough.
I understand.
Yes.
We re-did that contract, and so that is the new mainscape price. So we'll, we'll have a note to reflect that.
Okay, so that should just say increase in contract renewal.
Yes.
2025 through, yep.
So you're saying the differential is accounted to the mainscape contract increase?
Yes.
The 202,000.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a huge increase.
Well.
Not really.
The expenses are allocated a little bit differently this time, too. We had them broken out much more in the other contract where it's more consolidated now under landscaping. It encompasses a lot more. We, we had the.
Parks and the parks, dock.
They're the dock park, the fun part.
So now they're all here.
Everything got a little more.
Was everything consolidated in prior?
No.
No.
So.
So it's not really 605, 807?
Yes, it is because as an overall total, it is.
But the 605 had things that were in other places also that should.
Yes.
If you wanted to compare apples to apples, you gotta add in from other areas also.
You would have had to.
I think, I think the talking point there, what we just need to be able to articulate is in the line item, there's a $200,000 increase. However, the contract was consolidated, which equates to either a net zero increase or a, you know, X amount. That's what we need to be able to articulate.
Why don't we put a column there that says that? It's not really 605.
It's in the notes.
We'll, we'll articulate that in the notes.
It just says landscape, mainscape contract.
Yeah.
What you're talking about doing is taking the 2024 and make it an amended or a pre-2025.
So you're.
Okay.
Reason why I'm calling it out is like, we, now that we all know that, it's fine. But there's gonna be many people are gonna be reviewing this and to save us some headaches in the future when someone says, well, why is the mainscape, mainscape contract going up 200,000? Why can't you guys negotiate that contract better, blah, blah, blah? Then we can say, well, it's a consolidated contract. It equates to a net zero increase for, you know, rollover from, from last, we just, it just, it'll save us some time.
Hey Doug, it is on the second page. So when you look at the second page and you go contractor service for landscaping, it says added into the common areas. So, so I guess we just.
I see that. All I'm saying is if we're gonna have notes, then it should say, you know, mains, 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 mainscape contract renewal in parentheses, consolidated contract, you know, just. A line item on page two ties back to the line item on page one. Just.
Well, the other one, like that I was pointing out earlier, the version four approved budget was 1,191, and it's off this by 30,000. The 30,000 is a line item, RM irrigation, that was not in the 2024 budget. That's what bothers me. How, I could see him having something that would be erroneous, but that didn't even exist. That's why I'm wondering, what, what the hell are they looking at that when they put this together? See what I'm getting at? All the other numbers balance out almost to the dollar, but throwing something in that wasn't even in the budget.
Is that, is that how much money we used? Is that an actual from the financials, the 30,000? Yes.
That was in the 400 last, this year.
That was the budget from this year.
24 is not completed, so you can only.
So, so is that one, does that fall in that category of something that was added that would make this apples and apples?
Yes.
Okay.
Got that then.
And can I just make a quick recommendation? As we go through, I know we're gonna go through multiple iterations. And what we typically do is we'll look at something at face value and say, oh, we either need to increase that, we need to decrease it, or it needs to stay the same. I would also, because we're early on in the early stages, if there's something we automatically know we're gonna need more money for that, we make that adjustment. If we automatically know that we won't need as much money for a valid reason, we can make the deduction. If there is something that we could potentially come back to in iteration three, that might be a lower priority, or there is an opportunity to cut. And we put either an asterisk or some type of notation to know that we've had some previous discussion about a line item. And there could be potential to trim that later on down the road. The reason why I'm saying this is we've got a lot of things, just like normal, but this year there's a lot of additional items. We are gonna have to make some tough decisions, probably in iteration three, where we're gonna have to make some cuts in order to get some stuff done, or just deprioritize things. So does that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's fine.
From a format point of view, I'd like to have every single page with the date that it was printed and the revision number, whatever it is. I don't see any reference here. If I look at this thing a month or two months from now, I won't know which one's which. Every page should have a date and its rev number, whatever that is. We did that last year, and apparently it didn't carry over.
So I do have a question. Are you guys, like regarding the line items, any, under landscaping, my only question is regarding the mulch. Are we gonna still do it once a year, or you wanna do it twice a year, November and right prior to?
We, we, we get that very discussion going in our HOA right now. That mulch is expensive. But if you're doing pine straw as an alternative, you cannot do it once. Pine straw will not last once. You're looking at two or three. So if you're going with mulch, as, do we have any experience of will one year make it?
So, yes, it did not make it. So we just had it.
Tried it.
Yeah, we, we had it done in November, and we just had it done a few months ago.
Where? With the mulch?
Mulch, yeah, mainscape did it, because I complained that I didn't think it was two inches, and then we just had it done again, so.
Now, with regards to the pine straw, we just did the Timber Ridge berm.
Yeah.
And we can see how long that holds up, but we'll need direction from you all. We can price out pine straw if that's what you want, or if you want to do.
Well, what we're looking at over at ours is places to where you have people that see objects like monuments and that type of stuff.
That's how we have it.
High visibility areas go to mulch, everything else go.
There's only two, three areas that we have pine straws, the Timber Ridge, across from List Station 7, and then all the way by the FPL Eastman before Stony Brook. And I would keep it that way, because those areas have pines already, so they're naturally, you know, doing it.
Self feeding.
Yeah, it's same thing with the, with the List Station 7, and then the new area that we started mulching now, because we had stopped because we didn't.
Why didn't you first double it, really doing it once a year?
Oh, mulch.
Mulch. Nine dollars a bag in place.
Yep.
In place.
So I just wanted to make sure, are we doing once a year? Or, or then once a year for what? We have regular mulch? And then twice a year for where we have pine straws? And I'm okay with the locations of the pine straws.
Yeah, is this based on?
And I think what we should probably do is we should categorize the areas. So we would have like a zone one, zone two, or zone three. Zone one is a high priority, gets mulch, you know, mulch, you know, twice a year or as needed. Three is maybe mulch one time a year, and then three would be pine straw. If we categorize it, then we know what areas, because also we know that mulch is expensive, but there are certain times of the year where it's more cost effective to mulch, where they're running, you know, sales or whatever. I don't know if that's conducive to our, the right time of the year, but it could be something we keep an eye on.
Now, are they basing this on two cubic foot bags or three cubic foot bags? Makes a big difference.
Two. The last installation was two.
Okay. Because I did it, went and calculated all of our 30 monuments and did the areas, did the whole nine yards calculated. They were talking about doing four bags per, what was it? 10, 10 square feet. 10 square feet, how much it took to cover it. Anyway, it was like, one bag did eight square feet is what I did in my own yard with mulch. You start dividing that out and you get some, when you get the total square footage and divide it by eight, that gives you the number of bags, multiply times nine dollars, the number is huge.
I, and I just wanted us to bring it back, because it's 20 minutes of mulch. 20 minutes of mulch. Were we looking for one, or were we looking for twice a year?
Is, was Doug, I, we go out and look at it, and then just make an opinion that we need to be.
I'm telling you, for locations, one, the Stony Brook FPL Eastman, that area has no visibility whatsoever. It's between the next level church and, and.
That's ridiculous.
So you know, I wouldn't even put it there like once a year, really, for pine straw. The area that will have high visibility is the Timber Creek. Hey Doug, one second. The high, the only area that right now has high visibility is the Timber Creek.
So you think to.
Timber Ridge.
For budgeting purposes.
The one, the one thing I'll say too is I know that we, we did move from pine straw to mulch in some areas. So like the Downey Way Boulevard, the median, we switched to mulch. And I'll tell you that the challenging part about that when we're using dark mulch is it looks great for a week, but then you start getting springs coming through, and it almost looks worse than what pine straw would look in that area.
Nothing works like some pine straw.
Yeah, the, the, well, what I'm saying is like the shelf life for mulch in some areas, if it's not weed controlled, it actually ends up looking worse when you put really nice mulch after about, you know, a couple of weeks, and you get those springs coming through, so you have to spray it constantly, whatever. So let's just constantly be evaluating that, the areas that are high visibility that we maintain. And like I said, if we can zone them and just figure out a, a way, or else we're just spending money for something that only looks good for a very short amount of time.
Well, I don't, I don't want to blanket, say, good, it's why, too. I like the idea of the zones. And once the zones are costed, then to, to Flavi's point, if there are some zones that need to, then you know what you're increasing your budget. It's not 130, it might only be 25,000.
Let, maybe I can help.
To do the second.
How about I'll have staff, I'll have, we have Scott who's dedicated to landscaping, I'll have him do his, about, his professional evaluation, and I'll bring that, that back to you at the sixth meeting.
But as you have it right now, all landscaping is mulch, no pine straw.
No, that is, that's a blend.
Yes.
It's 100, that's.
Okay, that's a blend, so we don't know then the square footage is of one versus the other.
We need to know that.
Yes.
We need that.
Okay.
We have that. Well, we, I will have Scott put together his opinion.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
And then, so that's the only thing that I had in landscaping services. Do you have anything else? No?
No.
Okay. Waterway Management Services, anything there?
Okay, then go back one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Only because I'm doing this right now at the HOA.
Sure.
I'm learning by getting burned. Is the management contract, this 807, is this divisible by 12, and we're going to be billed that monthly? Or is? So it varies each month?
It could, yeah, like this month, we only.
Because of the annuals and.
Okay, I know it's a timing issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to get.
It's not, it's not like it was in the past, where it was, the contract was X and divided by 12. No, it's for services rendered. It's a per unit.
Okay, so, so that number, this number.
It's the mainscape.
807. When you get, so then when you have a contract in that had 10, 12, 13 different items, work activities, you add them all up, and that's how you got 807. But they may come in where 800, 300,000 of that is in the first six months, and 500 is in the last, or vice versa. It's as actually incurred.
Yes.
And what we have is the, we have the landscape services, and then anything that's the parks related, that is now, that's still a separate line item.
So then you're, as, not as a, but a pay item in that lump sum deal, it is a separate to pay items.
We, we learned that with the palm trees two years ago.
Yep.
Alright, anything else for landscaping?
Yep.
Did you, did you hear my question, Chelsea?
No, I'm sorry, Doug.
Okay, so on page two, where we have the parks, like the, the soccer field and the dog park and all that stuff, so that is now pulled out. I know, I'm just making sure I'm clear. All, all that landscaping is pulled out for, for 2025, and that is incorporated in the, in the master agreement included in the 800.
Not all of it. It's, the soccer complex is still separate, but this, these are, because we didn't have any to track them.
Well, landscaping should be in the area of what it's applicable to. It's just general OO1, it would go, now if it's park and rec, which is OO1 also, what makes the difference? Where it's at. But if it's.
Copper complex stays its own thing.
Well, the only, the only thing you've got is because of our way we do our methodology, there is a different payment for the landscaping versus the park, and different people pay for it. So we gotta make sure that money ends up in the right category.
Okay, so that's the water, waterway management. Anything there?
Water quality testing is only gonna be half price, 40 to 20?
We're working through, finding out from Lee County. We have to make sure we're compliant with our MPDES standards, and we're firming up where we can get that tested and how, the frequency of that right now. But we've been taking samples to both Sanders and two.
No, that's not, that, okay, so originally we had the $40,000 because we're gonna test all the ponds, and we didn't do it. So that's why.
Okay.
Because the $40,000 was gonna be, if we were following the pond standards to the T, we didn't do it. We moved it around. Yes, and because Ernest.
Sorry, because Ernest couldn't, at that time, take the volume. But I think Steph has talked to him, and he's able to take the volume at no cost for us. So that's what you're gonna see this.
That's what we.
Yes, exactly. So that's what it is.
Thank you, Paula.
And the engineering fees and attorney fees related to landscaping or waterway management, excuse me, we expect that to be half of what it was?
Yes, because the, the project related, there's not random things that I expect Tetra Tech to have to do with regards to waterways. Most of it's project oriented, and those fees will be charged to the project.
And is that been our experience in 24?
Yes.
Yes.
Very much so.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing else for water management ways? Okay, parks and recs?
I guess the biggest change in here is that we moved, I moved the holiday lighting from special events. We're getting rid of the special events category altogether, so that, that is part of here, the district events. That got moved underneath there as well. So those, those two items were under their own category, and they are all part of Parks and Rec, and so we just moved them under there to make it all in one place.
Did we move an employee?
There were some salaries that were included under that area as well.
Because we've gone down. We've gone down in payroll and salaries and all the associated costs. That's why we must have dropped somebody or something.
Reappropriation, because most of the, the maintenance staff that, they used to be under Parks and Rec, they're really under Public Works.
Yeah.
So we've only accounted for a portion of their time for Parks and Rec.
Under R and M, where do you have, like, because I know that we're almost every year, there is a couple of goals that need to be replaced, some benches. Where is that accounted for?
That should be in capital, Doug.
Okay.
The cost of those items trigger capital.
Okay.
It's not so much the cost, it's more that we're replacing them.
Yeah, that's why I was curious where they were sitting.
Did, did something happen with utility services, electricity from 23 to 4 to quadruple the cost from 15,000 to 60,000?
Shut off the meter.
Well, that price would drop. Went from 15,000 and 23.
We had it shut off. It came back on.
To 60,000. Wow.
That's a good question. We'll, we need to go back and look at the spreadsheet to Ed's point earlier, make sure that the numbers that came.
Because this is another one where the total's not even close.
Yeah, and I've seen things like this in Pelican where we had the meters been incorrectly, the edges is now getting corrected.
We'll, we'll look into that one.
Okay.
But I think I want to go back to Doug's point, like I was just at the, at the field slot two days ago, and the soccer field, the, the the, the nest, not so much, but the actual frame, all the goals, they're in horrible shape, so they do need to have some repair. So I do believe that we should add that here, because capital is for replacement.
Yeah.
And I don't think they need a replacement. I, I do, I mean, I took some, actually, it's funny, I took some pictures, and there, there, there's rust on the corners, they're like flaking off.
We're gonna address those during shutdown, but we, if you want to add some money to the R and.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a lot.
It's repair.
Need it.
Yeah.
I have, Doug, you have any idea? What do we have?
We've got, we've got.
Well.
Owners, so we'll get a price.
One of the things that we should start doing, and we've talked about it for a couple of years, like the goals are not cheap, but the way they're made these days, they're, they're not made to be moved the way we move them. How most facilities get, address that is they have, you know, wheels on them. So what I'd love to see is us just maybe start purchasing a set, or maybe two sets of wheels every year, because we will increase the longevity of, of the equipment if we can move them around easily.
Yep. We'll get a.
So get staff to get a number for both adding that and then also doing it, okay, thanks. Anything else on parks and recreation?
The engineering fees went from 1,500 to 15,000?
Where are you at?
On the second page of this item.
Oh, that's Public Works.
You could. Oh, I jumped the mark, excuse me. Hold on.
So.
Engineering, yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead.
Okay.
That looked worse. Now I'll bring up page two. The engineering fees went from 1,500 to 15,000. Is that because of the new park coming in, or is this?
No, they were born at the last meeting directed that Tetra Tech needs to write all of our bids moving forward, so we need to account for that.
Okay.
Most of those would be Public Works related items.
Question, question regarding that is, is that in the current contract, or is that an amendment that we need to include in the, I can't remember.
It will be a one-off, like we'll, we'll just ask them to do it, and we'll just pay it off. Yeah, it's not, it's not a part of the contract. Whatever projects we have out there, we, if we need it, which we say we would, we just have them.
Here's, here's my thing. The, the reason why I would maybe contemplate putting some, an amendment language in the contract is that way there is an expectation that this takes place. Because we're gonna run into, if it's not in the contract, it's, even if it's, you know, project, we may not have a full on to when it might be coming. If they don't have the capacity to do it, then we're running into some issues.
But it's.
That's the biggest thing with it.
There will be a task authorization on a, as needed basis.
All, I can, I can go back and review the, the main contract and make sure it accounts for that type of service. But it would be, like Flavi said, we would request a task authorization, they would provide it. If it's under my authority, I would sign off on it. If not, I would bring it to you guys, and then they would draft the RFP or RFQ.
This is another one.
The task authorization as far as timelines, I think that's what Doug's referencing.
Yeah.
Trying to keep the engineers on path, and that could be, that would be the task authorization. You can add additional language. Make sure it's adhered to, and the task authorization.
This is another one where the line items don't match up.
Okay.
So it really makes it tough.
And, and one thing, I want to get the weeds here, but, you know, we're at, you know, we're, we're at the mercy of their capacity. So if we're saying that this is something that has to happen, in the event that they cannot meet our timeline, then we need to have, you know, a sec, something that we all agree as a secondary, like we would go to another source or something along those lines. So we need to be able to plan for, in the event that they don't have capacity to turn around the requirements within our timeline, just as.
Then, then we would be required to solicit an RFQ to bring engineering firms on board to do said task because of CCNA threshold. So that goes back to having one engineer, and you're at their mercy.
And that's what Chelsea has discussed, we've discussed, and we're working on a template to do an RFQ, RFP for a menu of engineering services. To have a pool of them pulling off.
I like that.
This is exactly, this is my original, this is why I mentioned it originally, because if the expectation is in the contract that Tetra Tech is responsible for, for drafting, reviewing, approving, whatever, all of our RF5, RFP documents, then there is an assumption that they will be able to turn that around within reasonable time per the task authorization. So the language that we put in the contract sets some guidelines and standards for them.
You keep cutting it.
Hey Doug, you're cutting out really bad, so, but I was just gonna ask Chelsea, under the notes, just remove the Tetra Tech ink, because that kind of gives it assumption that's all there. So just put engineering firms for bits. Yeah, so just.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Two lines above for the electricity streetlights and the R and M streetlights, the 91,000, is that impacted at all with our conversion?
Not yet, not until those lights are converted, so I.
That'll be a 26 or?
Probably, yeah.
What are you looking at?
Very late, 25.
The electric related streetlights.
Oh, okay.
The R and M and the electricity, but that eventually should go away.
Yeah. Yeah.
It should. Or be replaced by a single number?
It would be replaced by the.
A flat number.
Contract.
A flat number.
Contract flat number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and we don't yet know what that flat number's gonna be.
Yeah, we do.
They do?
Then, I have to go back and pull the numbers for poll.
It's for poll, I think it was like. Nineteen twenty-three? Yeah, we do have it, it's, it's in there.
How, how's that talk up?
It ties how many, yeah, so it's gonna be times how many polls, but I think the last time there was a discrepancy between. What they had in the map and what Edwin out there on the field and looked at it and what Steph did, so. So we have the unit per poll, we just have to make sure we have the X amount, the correct amount of streetlights so we can do that times whatever. So we do.
Polls than they counted.
Exactly, a lot more.
Yeah.
Okay, it was like eighty-seven, something like that.
Somewhere around ninety, I know that.
Okay. And, uh, anything else for public works? Okay, let's move on to swimming pool.
Health and life insurance. Nineteen thousand five hundred?
Again, that was the previous, a lot of the previous maintenance staff were. Charged under pool and Parks and Rec, and so those are now under Public Works.
We have one full-time employee under Parks and Rec, or swimming pool, you know.
Would you do, think you were getting a benefit or something?
Well, I thought we were cutting them all off.
You know, they're all part-time, so they don't get benefits. Alright.
Okay, anything that's really dramatic, it's just prompted a question.
Okay, so nothing else on swimming pool?
And see, that's one, that the carryover between the two. There's no change, that's what doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
How can one be so exact?
Sell.
And the other one's not even close.
Sell or align, it's probably a lapse, we'll, we'll get with time for Mark.
Okay.
Alright, so public safety, um.
We decided to just keep that there, cause that's what made the most sense, I really would love to get rid of it, but it doesn't really. I don't really know where else to put it where it would fit, so that's the only item under that area.
And I'm fine with the reduction.
So we have.
I'm ready to put zero, to be honest.
We've made some changes and improvements to the pool this year. And also, um, maintenance-wise, uh, it's cleanlinessier, we. We got that one email from, what, Candace Brown or something like that praising how the, the pool was being taken care of. Why, if we've made changes to the better, why are the numbers going up?
What is specific?
I mean, if things are being taken care of better, we shouldn't have to have as much.
We, I think.
Expense, should we?
I thought it went down.
We did, we went down, the bottom, the bottom line of that.
Twenty-five thousand.
They were three ninety-nine to three seventy-five.
Okay, but you said you didn't know that some of the numbers were correct.
This one, Ed just said that they, they pulled over evenly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the only one that so far has done that.
Okay, okay.
And the ninety-nine to seventy-five is twenty-five thousand, not thirty, whatever.
I see it, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, I said again, I trust that it was right, I plug in the green column.
So, and then for the sheriff's office, it's just the, the security patrols as directed.
As originally we had.
Yeah, and we'll make sure we stay within that budget.
Okay.
The budget of thirty.
Yes.
Not a hundred and fifty.
Nope.
Got it.
Alright.
Unless they decide to issue tickets and give.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is, this is reflects. The lack, lack haul.
It's, it's what? Special events is not, I don't see that.
It's not there, that's why I talked about earlier.
Because she moved it.
Parks and Rec.
And then, so other fees and charges.
Those are the only other ones then that fall through.
It's them. Okay.
The only, um, question is the reserve capital program. Um, that's.
That one do reduce?
Changed depending on your direction for the decade.
I'm sorry, put you.
That the reserve capital program may fluctuate depending on your decisions that you make.
From two seventy-nine to thirty-six.
Yeah. Right?
Alright, so.
So, in this O O one account, does it reflect this last flow chart that you gave us?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of months ago.
Yep.
So we're not.
The one plus that she asked for.
So.
No, you, uh, this was as of. Uh, March twenty-seventh, twenty-four.
For the staffing purposes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So. All those.
Positions.
All those positions will be in here?
Remember how we removed one? The water, stormwater.
Which is the name, the name.
I know, changed, but it was a price, it, it was in a different category and then. Carol had asked if we needed another one. Or, I think it was probably, I think it was public works.
We had a GIS analyst that was an, a new, the only new adult, well.
That's not on the staffing purpose, yeah, but that's one move, Karen was asking, yeah.
Right.
No, because.
At the time, yes, it's on it.
The GIS is not on there. Is this staffing chart?
What we should go by, as far as numbers of positions.
This is the proposed.
Yeah, not on there.
We had, cause the naming was off and you changed the naming, so this. That's her.
Oh, yeah, the bottom one actually should say GIS.
Yeah, okay.
Environmental twice, I fixed it if that version doesn't have correction. It was just the name was wrong.
Yes, so that is the total correction.
Yeah, the body.
And was there anything for, uh, inflation or pay increases or anything?
Yes.
In these numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
The merit increases are in there with the exception that I didn't know.
Yes, five percent.
You had to let me know what hers is gonna be, because that's the only number I don't know for next year, so.
So you did.
Not showing now, but I mean, I.
How much are you gonna give us?
I kept it as words now.
So you did it across the board, five percent.
I just assumed a flat, it was, we did, I used four. So.
You used four percent.
I was just a flat, but some people make it more, some people make it less.
Sure.
I thought you used five, I thought everywhere else was five.
It says four. Alright, I have a question.
So what, what is the projected consumer price index next year?
We'd have to pull it up.
I didn't look.
Three, three, four. What, between three?
Three and four.
But there's no, keep in mind, there's no base. Increase, like, if there's, if they don't perform, they get nothing. They get nothing, they get no rates, so it's strictly merit-based, it's not a flat.
It's not a cost of living.
It's not a cost of living, it's a merit increase.
So we don't give any cost of living?
We do not. Our merit increases are on merit base.
We, we did a reflection of those in this current fiscal year, we. Did that whole analysis of the comps and got everybody where they needed to be, now there are incentives for, like, for our utility staff to get. Higher licenses and things like that, we have that in our employee manual.
But there's no cola, no.
So, everybody's tight, everybody's still in here, everybody's range is within. The normal practices, it's all been shipshaped.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We would probably look at that again, like, every three years is probably typical for you to look at, um, doing market, market analysis about every three years.
Okay, and then we also talked about, uh, the benefits package that we, um. Are offering. And you guys were gonna look at some alternatives and get back and whatever, none of that is in here either.
That is not, we're, that is not.
I, I, the numbers that are in here for the benefits are based on what we have today.
Today.
Not.
It, that, that will just be across the board change if it occurs.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
So you'll just plug that in when. Decide on something.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Okay, and I, and I, I apologize for the delay and if, if I'm breaking up, but. What, what my recommendation would be is that. We set, um, maybe, uh, a, a two or to three-year window. Um. To continue to look at this, I don't think we're gonna be able to put any adjustment in for this budget season. Cause there's just so much stuff going on, but we should make a conscious effort that we are gonna continue to evaluate this. Um, and to make sure that we are up, you know, up to standard or whatever, um, but it doesn't have to be this year necessarily.
And what, what complicates it is the fact that we do, our budget is due in. June and August and our plan renews in January, which means I don't get rates until October or November. So I'm well past for this budget year, so to figure out, it's like, we're, the budget is way ahead of the benefits, so it's, it's hard.
We've got, we've reached out to our.
I think I have five places are gonna call me in October.
We've reached, we've reached out to our employment law attorney to find out what type of. Benefit. Total compensation packages that we could offer, I know we talked in the past about, you know, the longevity, if they've been here, can we offer, you know, increase. To their retirement plan, those types of things, so we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, so at the last meeting, I think the board gave direction to you guys to go ask the staff what they want, have we done that? Cause I know that's one thing that we asked.
Not yet, no.
Okay, good, that, we need it now, like. I'll make that a fan. Okay.
Yep.
About all around, it's okay.
And, and, one quick thing, at the end of the day. Our district philosophy is that. We, uh, maintain competitive rates, uh, and, and wages with, within our staff, that's existing and bringing any new people on. If we adhere to that, and, and, let's say next year, if we don't have, if we don't make adjustments to benefits or whatever. We still hold true to our, our philosophy, which is we, we stay competitive in the marketplace, we might have to do that by, you know. Salaries or, or getting creative in some areas, so I don't want to have to race for this budget season to come up with. You know, benefit increases or, or whatever else, especially when it's a small percentage of the population, it should be an ongoing effort on our part, if that makes sense.
Alright, thanks. Ed had something.
Yeah, good question on the, the capital program, we've reduced that down, but. Uh, where are we accounting for what we know is a shortage on both, uh. Funding to, for the building and the park, where's that at in this spreadsheet?
That'll need to get added in here.
It's what?
That will need to get added, that capital.
So, so those.
Basically a board direction number, I plugged something in there for the, for now, but if. You guys need to tell me how much of, from that capital sheet you want to include on this.
Okay, I'll give you an example, I went back and looked at last year's, and I, as I recall, we had for park, uh. Eight hundred and fifty thousand, okay? Was budgeted capital for the phase one or phase two park. We know that that number is going to be significantly higher. Where's that at in here?
It's not in there yet.
It's, so it's not here at all, so this is a supplement. To the capital reserve for things that we have identified here excluding the building and the park. Other capital items, this, this is a supplement, it didn't, it didn't. You're, you're generating revenue to increase the capital reserve.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so it, take those two things off the table.
Yeah.
Because I think they're influencing it wrongly, we have all the other capital items. This is to make sure that we have enough money in to make those happen at the year they're supposed to happen, is that correct?
That's the goal, and you.
Hundred and thirty-six, it's sort of like, yes, it's, I'm, I'm just having a problem with it going down, that's my problem.
There was some discussion, well, I think this number needs to be revised, again, I just plugged something in there.
Unless somebody dropped something out that would have caused the capital, total capital reserve to drop.
We did move some things because with all the projects going on, there was stuff that we knew that wouldn't get done.
So if we.
But there was conversation last year from you guys, I have to go back and look at my notes, that we are gonna gradually step up the percentage that was needed for the capital improvement, I think you wanted to do like twenty-five percent one year and then they go to like forty. And then we're gonna do fifty, so you were gonna, and so I don't know what you're gonna do, so I need your guidance.
Mine is, what we need is, is to see the revised or the current capital reserve sheet. With the projections for the next couple of years to determine that.
Right.
Will one forty, one thirty-six, three hundred.
Meet.
Causes to meet our goal.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what we gotta do.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, do you, I would prefer if we could.
Go to admin.
The Pelican for now, because there.
We haven't done admin.
There's some changes made, yeah, and we can do the admin. Um, there were some changes that were made to that sheet over, based on some meetings the last couple of days, so, um. And, and I need to update that. And it hasn't gone to P PAC yet with the revisions. Alright, it's close.
This is the shared cost. For the operational admin.
Okay, so this page is fourteen and fifteen, correct?
I think for you, it might be.
These fifteen, fifteen.
It's actually fourteen and fifteen, yeah, I had to rearrange it.
Okay, so we, now we go back to the admin at the beginning.
And wait a second, I'm fine, there's a couple of finals.
It's in the middle of the four hundred, actually.
Pelican Reserve.
It's in the middle of the four hundred, it gets, the four hundred got out of whack. My have no page, I'm just.
Oh, okay, I saw your page, yeah, here's the quarter, so, alright, I got it, thank, okay, so.
I'm just flipping through pages.
Alright, so we have, um. Again, the highlighted ones are the big things, the news.
Yeah, so a good example of this one is, is that it does appear that we have. A significant deal, cause this one's general fund O O one total, seven eighty-one, and from the carryover from last year was five. So something is. Way, way, way out of whack, and I haven't had a time to go through to check each line item, but, uh. This, this is a critical one.
Seven hundred and O O one, right?
Only O O one.
Yeah, okay.
Um, last September, when we brought, uh, the facilitator lady in to help us go and get, um. Produce our goals for the year and all that sort of stuff, and this stuff, are we gonna do that again?
I had not planned on bringing her back, but if you'd like to, um, we can have, ask, ask for an update.
Yeah, I did not include that in my professional fees, cause I.
Okay, I would like to include it, um, because I think. When we started last year, a lot of our goals were multi-year goals. And I think we need to continue that, you know, like, we need a, we had a three-year goal for this and a five-year goal for that. But we need to concentrate just on twenty-five now. And I don't know that we need two days like we had last time, but I think, um. I think one day or one afternoon concentrated on just twenty-five, what we're going to try and get done in twenty-five.
Okay.
Cause I think our goals were very lofty when we made them, I think it's time.
It was the first time we had any.
Right.
So I found, I was like, let me pull.
We should, we should.
I, I think, I think also, we've got so many balls in the air right now that sometimes you almost wanna. You, you, you're afraid to, to touch one, because then something's gonna happen over here and something's gonna happen over to here, and it's almost like. Crisis management.
Yep, we all ask if that's the direction. Direction of the boards, um, I will get a price from Lorna and to see if she can come back.
Alright.
Yeah.
This one's so different, it's.
It is a lot, like, all the numbers are very, like.
Now you know my dream numbers.
Yeah, and I almost. Now you know my dream numbers, yeah, and I almost. If anybody has anything else, we'll just give it a feedback and honestly, cleaner version.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, much cleaner.
Yeah, since we, since we have a document that's memorialized, which is our budget. Can we use the format of the budget to come over to the new one and then just add new line items?
That's, yeah.
Because these, these.
That is what this is.
Uh, they're, they're not even close.
Then, the, the dollar values and the fours don't match.
There's even line items that don't match, so we need to check this close.
Okay, we will get it from.
That'll make it a lot easier to look at it.
Yep, we can do that. Alright.
Alright. Anything else? I mean, I know they have a bunch, but it's just like. That's why we said early, okay. Yes, Chelsea.
What are you gonna jump to Town Lake and call it quits?
Well, again, is there any?
Major things, any things that we need.
The only thing I see is, is that we've got to do, and I'll harp on it again, we've gotta get that park and we've gotta get that building. Those two costs separately identified in here as what their costs, standalone costs are for each one of these, these two. Cause they're, they're, they're big bucks.
If there's going to be in the twenty-five spending year, fiscal year, they, they will.
I agree, I, I don't think, none of us disagree with that.
I just wanna.
And they may be pro rate.
What, what costs are you looking for to the budget? Are you looking at operations? Operation and maintenance?
Operation maintenance and capital reserve, both of those two items which majorly impact OO one.
So I would not expect operation, it to be operational in FY twenty-five.
Right, which is why they're not there.
Not, not even later in the year?
I don't know.
Maybe later calendar year, but.
I, we, we've gotta have the number anyway.
Okay.
So we, we can worry about whether or not if it's fractally going to be. Yeah, for their three months, if the building's still in construction, then there isn't gonna be a whole hell of a lot of them then.
Operations under parks and, for phase two, and then we.
No, not separate.
It's two B, you guys proved phase two B.
Yeah.
So operations and maintenance for that, and then on the capital side. Have the same number that we got, I got from TouchTuck yesterday, and then uh I'm still working on the ops. And then the same thing for the admin building.
For the building, it's all right, great.
Yes.
Good, 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 good.
We can get that in for your Mason's team.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, wait a minute, I thought we weren't even probably going to put a shovel in the ground yet this year for the admin building.
The issue is, is that if, first of all, we need to know the numbers so that we know what the impact of the project is. We're gonna have to do that sometime.
Yeah.
The issue is, there may be a determination is, would there be, I'm gonna say you're probably right, for the building. It having a chance to go operational in twenty-five is getting somewhere between slim and none and.
Or we've. The shovel and the ground has stopped building.
Maybe though.
Aren't we gonna be building all of twenty-five?
Yeah.
I think so.
That, that could be easy, cause once you get the site work done, park can go full speed on its own. Easy. Very easy.
To grade, then it's just.
Okay.
So basically in twenty twenty-five, you're gonna be fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Which starts October first of this year, we're gonna be building the administrative building, not. Inhabiting it or anything else, and maybe building the parks thing at the same time.
Site work?
But not using it or anything like that.
The park thing is just site work.
No, physically, the park, the park work has site work and the park itself. The issue is, is that.
The part of the, the bid included only the site work, moving the dirt.
No, no, no.
No, that's what I.
No.
That's what I'm trying to make sure everybody.
I told them we did the building site work, we were at the same time gonna do phase two.
Park.
Site work.
And, and, and the courts, all that's in.
Yeah, site work.
Yeah, site work.
Not building the courts.
It's the courts.
In, in, in other words, we're gonna move the dirt once.
No, 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 it's.
Guys, we're talking about two different things, Chelsea, go on this one and then I'll have Ed go.
And, and the bid that is out on the street right now, they've only, they, it's the admin building in totality. Site work, utilities for park stuff, grading. The improvement, the amenity improvement will come at a future date.
That's what I.
Well, I, I thought that was in phase two.
It is, but it has to be.
It's not at the same time.
It has to be, we have to finish the.
Phase two construction is different than phase two site work.
I tell you.
But we.
You guys playing numbers with me. Phase two is phase two. To have a complete phase two, you gotta.
We haven't voted on complete phase two, you just made it on phase two site work.
Right.
So that when we.
I think so, I don't think so.
I'm wrong?
No.
I hope, I wish you were right, but I don't think we're right.
You guys approved.
Okay, do you get the direction? We need you to get those numbers for operations.
I got it.
Uh, make sure they're like.
Good.
Okay.
So in twenty-five, we're looking at construction.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's nothing that would have to go into here about construction.
It.
Cause that's.
If there's a delta from what we have in the bond and what bids come back, if the bids come back higher than what we have budgeted. That's what, I believe that's what, I, I don't want words in your mouth, Ed, I believe that's what he's asking for, so that's what I've got to plug in.
Okay.
Cause there will be a short, shortfall.
And so then this question is probably for Tony, but the, in the bond, the last bond issue that you did, the twenty-three. I guess bond issue.
For capital improvements.
For if there, the administrative building was in there.
Correct.
Okay. Can you only use that money that is in there that you sold the bonds for? Or are there, uh, for instance, if there was something else in the bonds that you decided to put off to another time and use that money. For the admin building, can you do that?
You mean transfer?
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a cap number.
No.
That's in the bond issue as far as the proceeds, maximum proceeds.
Right.
That can be received. There are various projects outlined in there with engineers, estimates and opinions of probable cause. And there are dollars allocated to the particular ones. I can't recall if there was language in there about the ability to vary the numbers.
Per category.
But, but typically, that is in there, and then also typically, you can always go to bond council and say, how much flexibility do we have? To reallocate money from one activity or product to another one, provided it doesn't change. The underlying assessment methodology, that's the key.
Yeah.
And whether or not it needs bond holder consent or not, and that becomes a bond council question.
Tony.
We've done that before, we're even.
To Pedro about that.